Good evening. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link and then select Board of Education, then the Board Doc's Agenda, and then select Tonight's Meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the Board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 11.04. Please state the items that you're referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01, and there's a sign-up sheet located on a table in the back of the room if you would like to speak. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the Board, and then there will be a timer shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Hendricks, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
If everyone would like to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first main agenda item is the retirement recognitions. I would like to recognize Mr. Velardo.
Thank you, President Cotter. This is just a joyful occasion for us, but admittedly, it's a little bit bittersweet. We say goodbye to people that have done tremendous work in the district and given us many years, in some cases, many, many years, but we are just really excited for the next chapter. Let me read something to you, just a moment, and then I will go to the podium, ask the Board Administration to come up front here. Then I'm going to ask each one of you to come up to me, and I'm going to introduce you individually, but I'd first like to just share with you that collectively, we would like to say congratulations. The Westerville City School District is losing 170 years of combined experience in the licensed and classified staff that are leaving us today. Regardless of where this phase of your life's journey takes you, please know how proud we are of the work that you have done, that you have accomplished during your time here. Your legacy is what you have put into the lives of the other adults that you've worked with and the students that you've cared for. Your legacy will be treasured for many years to come as the students whose lives you've touched and have guided become successful adults. In addition, as you will see in just a moment, you have touched the lives of your peers, and that is not something to be taken lightly. Seeing the results of your work firsthand provides us with an optimistic outlook on the state of our schools, the state of our community. I would suggest the state of our country because you have touched the life of a child and you have taught our future leaders well. From the Board, from the Administration, we wish you a long, healthy, and joy-filled retirement. I'm going to go to the podium, ask the Board, Mr. Hersheiser, and Laura, you get to go This year's retirees will be honored much like we do at graduation. For the last several months, the Superintendent's Office has been collecting descriptive words of you from your peers. That in itself should have most of you running, I would think, which we have been put into a keepsake that you will get in just a minute. Each retiree in attendance, I'm going to ask you to come forward, to stand here to face the Congress -------------------------------------------------- Gail Walter. Would Gail, please, come forward?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You can tell how all the retirees just love standing here next to me. So, Gail, if you'll face them. Gail is from the Early Learning Center, and the three words that best describe her, according to her peers, are knowledgeable, cultured, and a traveler. So, please help me congratulate Gail. Joseph comes to us from St. Paul School, and the three words that best describe him, according to his peers, kind-hearted, adventurous, and one of a kind. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Joseph, one more time. Ken, as I said, comes from Custodial Services, and the last building he worked in was?
Faust Elementary.
Faust Elementary, has head custodian for about 10, about?
About eight years.
About eight years. His partners recognize him as genuine, intelligent, and a communicator.
You sure they asked about him?
I did, we did ask about him. Congratulations to Ken. Go on up.
Thank you. Sure.
Craig, also from Custodial Services, is recognized as dependable, a veteran, and hard-working. Please thank Ken.
Thank you.
I just talked to Charlotte a few moments ago in the break room, and Charlotte told me that she, before she was a bus driver, was a semi-driver, right? Semi-trucks. So, I said, because I just say things sometime, I said, so which was harder, driving all the children on the bus or the semi-loads? And she quickly responded, "The semi-loads don't talk back to you," so...
Plus, the bus driving, the freight that you have on the bus with you is precious, and it's unreplaceable. It's very valuable.
Very nice, very nice. Thank you. Charlotte, Transportation Services, is by her peers, named as a hard worker, a trainer, and passionate. Help us thank Charlotte.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am just the one that gets to speak the words, but I guarantee you that from the Board and from the Administration, we take very seriously and very deeply the passion with which you have done your jobs for many years. You have impacted lives. Never, never forget that. And so, on behalf of the Board, the Administration, I just, we love taking the time to do this, and would all of you, just one more time, thank all of our retirees. And I think there'd be some pictures out in the hallway for those of you, unless you want to stay for the rest of the Board meeting. Yeah, thank you. There'll be some pictures out front. Thank you.
Don't you think? Somebody's going to stay one of these days. Thank you for playing along. Now we know the outcome of people who are not here for a retirement.
Okay, our next agenda item is 4.01. We do not generally do a motion to approve the minutes, but they are minutes for May 7th, regular session, and executive session is held on May 10th. Are there any comments from the Board about those minutes? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move forward. Our next part of the agenda is 6.01, Public Comments, and it doesn't look like anyone has signed up for that. Opportunity to speak. Moving on to item number 7.01, can I have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Hendricks, would you like to discuss that item?
So, tonight, we are bringing the April financials forward for your review and approval. As of April 30th, our year-to-date receipts in the general fund were $165,47,000. Year-to-date expenditures, $138,323,000. An unencumbered balance of $116,201,000. All funds, year-to-date receipts, $212,538,000. Year-to-date expenditures, $183,291,000. And an unencumbered fund balance for all funds of $135,396,000.
Any questions? Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Okay, can I also have a motion in a second for item 7.02, the resolution to approve the updated five-year forecast for fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hendricks?
I'll go to the --
Madam President, members of the Board, I am here tonight to present you with an updated five-year forecast. The purpose of this forecast is to provide a standardized tool for long-range planning to serve as a basis for the district's ability to sign the 412 certificate and to provide ODE and the Auditor State's Office a method to identify districts headed toward financial difficulties. The forecast is required to be filed each October and May. Now, those numbers are very small, but here is our updated forecast as of May. The district has performed better than the October forecast in revenues and expenditures for FY '18. Revenues are exceeding expenditures by $16.4 million for FY '18, which is $7.7 million improvement from October. So, let's take a look at each individual line so you can see that a little better. General property, real estate, is budgeted at, oh, where's my sheet? At $108,500,000. And then, of the property tax, almost 60% of the district's revenue is generated from real estate property taxes. Reappraisal occurred in 2017, values for tax revenue for 2018, and substantial growth was realized. Residential property values grew by $214 million. However, property value growth does not generate current rent property tax revenue. This is due to House Bill 920 whereby tax rates are rolled back to virtually eliminate any impact of increase in values. While voters approved a substitute renewal of the emergency levy in 2016 that allows growth from new construction from that point on, we believe that the majority of this increase is due to changes in the federal tax laws that are limiting the amount of deductibility of property state and local income taxes. There's anecdotal evidence that taxpayers had the, that had the cash, prepaid their entire 2018 tax bill before January 1, 2018, to take credit on their 2017 taxes. The true impact of this will become clearer as we receive the second half settlement in the fall. This is reflected in decreased projections for 2019, and then you'll see the growth continue thereafter. Personal property tax allocation and personal utility, public utility, personal property tax. So, personal utility is budgeted for $3.5 million, and property tax allocation is now forecasted at $14 million. Slight change in both of those, nothing significant. Public utility revenue, that category is about 1.8% of the district revenue. The increase is basically as businesses invest in the utility infrastructure, and is projected to grow about 2.5% over the next five years. Property tax allocation, that account, or that line item, is for the state reimbursement of local taxes known as homestead and rollback. The reimbursement is based on real estate revenue, and the projected trend parallels the residential real estate revenue. State foundation is unrestricted and restricted, two line items. The restricted line item is budgeted at $44.3 million now in the forecast, and unrestricted, or the restricted, is now at $1.2 million. Unrestricted didn't change very much. The restricted increased a little bit, and we'll talk about that. So, the unrestricted grants and aids are the Ohio's per pupil funding. The district is a cap district, which means that our calculated per pupil funding is more than a state allows to flow to the district. Our unfunded formula for this year FY '18 was $11.8 million. The forecast is modeling a 3% gain cap, and that's currently in the state budget for '18 and '19, and then 2.5% for the years '20 through '22. The 2.5% is a decrease from the October budget, when it was at 3% for all years, due to the state not meeting the revenue projections and the uncertainty of what the funding model may look like once we have a new governor in the fall. Restricted grants and aids are a very small portion of our per pupil funding for economic disadvantaged students and for career technical education. The increase from October is due to the increase in students participating in qualifying career technical classes, which include our career centers and some of our pathway classes. Other revenue, so we have other operating revenues and other financing revenues, sources, and other operating revenues are forecasted at $10.4 million now for the May forecast, and other financing at $1.3 million for the forecast. Yeah, and so, we had significant increases in both of these items, and we'll talk about those. So, all other operating revenues is about 5.1% of the district's revenue. This line item includes payments in lieu of property taxes, also known as TIFs, tuition paid by other districts, special needs reimbursements, preschool and all-day kindergarten tuition, building rental, investment income, and school fees. The increase from the October forecast relates to special needs tuition paid from other districts of about $1 million, increase in investment income of about half a million dollars, and increase in reimbursements for special needs catastrophic cost of about $450,000. That is primarily due to having more students able to be, submit for the reimbursement. There is a threshold on if your expenditures go over that, when you can submit for that. So, we have quite an increase in the number of students that we are submitting this spring. Other financing sources, this category represents the refund of prior year expenditures. Some of these occur each year as the reimbursement for Medicaid and our rebate from Staples. Others are not annual, they are just refunds that we get from time to time, either from SERS, Bureau of Workers' Comp, or E-Rate, which is a federal program where we can get reimbursed for some communication purchases. They have to be specific purchases, and then sometimes when we make those, we can get money back. So, the big change from October was, we did receive an E-Rate reimbursement this year. It's a one-time thing, that was $546,000, and we received refunds from the Bureau of Workers' Comp of about $408,000. The Bureau of Workers' Comp has already announced that they are going to give another billion back for, I think, the fourth time now, and so, we will be seeing some of that in July. So, you'll see FY '19 projections are a little bit higher, and in the other years, we'll fall back off because we won't know if we will be getting these one-time things. So, that's the revenue. So, here's our revenue in a pie chart. You can see that the real estate tax makes up about 60% of the revenue that we receive from all our various sources. So, for expenditures, our first one is Personnel Services, budgeted, or forecasted now for May at about $93.8 million. That's a decrease of about $2 million from the October forecast. Personnel Services make up about 56.4% of the district's budget. The district was able to contain salary growth in FY '18 due to retirement replacement savings. This FY '18 was the first full year of the savings of approximately 160 staff that we had leave in the last two years. However, an offset to that is when you bring in staff at a lower level, then you have more staff, a higher percentage of staff getting steps as well. So, it does have some offset. So, the forecast provides an average annual budgeted increase of 5.8% through FY '22. This budget level will help support competitive employee salaries and limited FTE growth. The decision regarding the forecasted budget amounts will be reviewed annually in light of sustainability and levy considerations. Next, we have Employee Retirement and Insurance Benefits, forecasted at $32.5 million, a decrease of about $646,000 from the October forecast. So, fringe benefits are about 19.2% of the budget. The change from October is obviously the result of the decreased personnel expenditures, as some of those directly relate, and also a partial year increase in premiums for health care. There was originally budgeted the whole amount, but we only, we don't change and increase that until December, so five months were at the old rate, and then seven at the new. So, that was a little bit of that fluctuation as well. Growth in this category is fueled by projected annual increase in health insurance premiums as a result of increased claims. Premiums have been forecasted at 12% for FY '19 and 10% thereafter. This is a change from the October forecast, when there was 8% increases projected for all years. Each year of the forecast, the district will review actual results with projected and make adjustments as warranted. Purchased Services. Purchased Services are budgeted at about $22 million. This is an increase of about $700,000 from the October forecast. Tuition paid by others is nearly 51% of the district's purchased services cost. Other costs in this category include utilities, special needs transportation, and legal fees. Tuition costs are very difficult to project because of the volatility of the number of students served, the level of services, and the service provider. These costs are projected to grow $768,000 in FY '19. There has been a decrease in the purchase services for FY '19 due to reclassing some special needs transportation costs to other objects, as a large portion of this program will now be brought in-house, and those staff will be through the Educational Service Center next year. So, you'll see a decrease here in purchase services, and then we'll see an increase later when we get to other objects. Supplies and Materials are budgeted at just around $6 million, and there's no change from the October forecast. The district increased its FY '16 investment in supplies, primarily instructional, by about $1.5 million in FY '16. The textbooks and instructional materials for FY '18 is projected to be $2.8 million and to drop to $2 million in FY '19. This is due to a reclassification of instructional devices. So, it's just, basically, our Chromebooks and our other technology devices had been classified in this category, with some of them in the capital that you'll see here in just a minute, and so, we're just putting them all together in one place so we can track all of those going forward. The rest of the supply account is attributed to custodians, transportation, and buildings. All supplies combined are projected to reduce at an average annual rate of 1.35% due to this reclassification. So, as I just mentioned, capital outlay is budgeted at just about $2 million for FY '18, a slight decrease from October. Capital outlay in the years '15 through '17 included some expenditures for building repairs. The main components of this going forward for FY '18 and beyond will be equipment and technology. In addition, as mentioned in the previous slide, the shift of instructional devices from supplies to capital in FY '19 is influencing that increase. So, pretty much just an offset between the two. Other Objects are budgeted for FY '18 at $10.4 million, or an increase of about $300,000 since the October forecast. This category, the primary expense in this category is contracts with the ESC of about $7.6 million in FY '18. This includes our substitutes and our instructional aides. The other operating expenditures include county fees of about $1.5 million for FY '18, which we pay for the collection of property taxes, we pay to the Treasurer and Auditor's Office, and then the win-win agreement payment. The increase in FY '19 reflects the change, as I mentioned earlier, in the special needs transportation, with those drivers now becoming employees through the ESC, we'll hire them through the ESC to do that special needs transportation that is currently outsourced right now. And then, that's partly offset by the decrease in the win-win payment as that continues to phase out over the next four years. Operating Transfers Out are budgeted at $115,000. There's no change from the October forecast. Just a reminder, those funds are transferred to the OO9 Fund to offset the instructional fees that have to be waived for free and reduced lunch to children that we can't charge for, and then also, the district transfers $65,000 to the OO3 Fund, the field turf replacement, which, that what has been built up till this point will now be used for the replacement of Central's turf this summer. Replacement of North and South are still a few years out, and that will become from other future transfers and/or the permanent improvement fund. So, here are expenditures in a pie chart form. If you can, may I explain? So, school districts generally have salary and benefits expenditures that range from 80 to 85%. That's your normal, where most districts fall. If you look at our salaries and benefits, it's 76%, but you also have to add in, in that other expense category of 6%, about 5% of that is for our subs and instructional aides. So, when you add that in, the district's about 81% for salary and benefits. So, here's all that put together in one slide. It's a little bigger, so hopefully you can see. So, in summary, the district has performed better than the October forecast in revenues and expenditures. FY '18 revenues are up by 5.8 million or 3.26%, primarily due to the timing of real estate payments, tuition from other districts, investment income, and then the E-Rate and Bureau of Workers' Comp reimbursements. FY '18 expenditures are down by about $1.9 million or 1.14% due to the containment of salaries and benefits through the retirement and replacement savings. So, combined, that's a change of $7.7 million. So combined, that's a change of $7.7 million. An improvement to the forecast are about 4.6% of expenditures. And then there's the forecast with the all-years on there, just summary level of revenue expenditures. So while the forecast has improved, the results still point to a revenue shortfall beginning in FY '20. Projected revenue growth is forecasted at 1.4% through FY '22 as compared to projected expenditure growth of 4.81% through FY '22. So while cash reserves are strong, the district will continue to need to investigate levy scenarios that could provide additional operating revenue at some point in the future.
Any questions?
Questions?
Very thorough, Laura. Thank you. Well done.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. Can you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7.03. Can I please have a motion to amend the fiscal year 2018 appropriations for all funds?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes. So along with the changes that we've made in the forecast, we're also just updating our appropriations, which is a separate document from the forecast. It's what we're using to actually function for this year, our approval level. And because of some of the salary and benefits savings that we've had, we're able to reduce some of that. As well, there are some new grants that we've received throughout the year, and some other minor funding increases or decreases in our grants. And the other one I want to point out was, we are increasing the Capital Improvements PI Fund by $300,000, so we can continue to work on the South renovation design that you have asked for.
Questions? Please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 7.04. Can I please have a motion to approve resolution to approve the application for one-time records disposal?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Hendricks?
Yes. So this is our annual records disposal process. We follow the board policy and the administrative guidelines. Once a year, we ask all the staff to go through their records. According to that schedule, every record has a time period that it has to be kept and how long. And so once a year, we go through, and they are able to purge some of their records and box those up. And so then we bring this to your, for your approval, and then we'll pass the list on to the Ohio Historical Society, who reviews it to make sure there's nothing of importance they think they want to keep. And then we'll go ahead and have those records shredded probably in June time period, so.
Any questions?
You know, with the retirements, and parties, and smores, I would think that that size bonfire would...
We could like run out for bonfires.
Bonfire, never mind. Clearly, nobody's buying.
Can you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, our next agenda items are 8.01 through 8.09. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And Madam President, I would like to move that we call 8.02 and 8.10 separately from the personnel consent agenda. We can call those together. That allows me to vote on the others and to abstain from those that I need to abstain.
Okay, so you're modifying the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. 8.01, 8.03, 8.04, 8.05 through 8.09 for now.
I second that motion.
Ms. Lofton?
Good evening, President Cotter. If it's okay with you, I usually read them all, and then you vote two separate.
That's fine.
Thank you. Good evening, President Cotter, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains 10 sections involving 550 persons, over, sorry, 550 persons. Section 8.01 is the resignation of eight classified employees and one substitute. 8.02 is the resignation of four teachers, two supplemental contracts, and one amended item. 8.03 is a contractual status change for five classified employees. 8.04 is a leave of absence for one teacher. 8.05 is a temporary change of assignment for one classified employee. 8.06 is a variety of one-time payments for teachers. 8.07 is the reemployment of three classified administrators. 8.08 is the reemployment of 13 licensed administrators and 328 teachers. 8.09 is the employment of two classified employees, two substitutes, and one summer student worker. And 8.10 is the employment of five licensed administrators, four teachers, various extended days, home instruction, tutors, and supplemental contracts. And if I might add, we do have four of our five administrators here with us this evening, so we'd love to introduce those, if you want to do that before or after your vote. We have Ms. Kaylee Baker, who is our current EdTech Integration Coach, one of our EdTech Integration Coaches, is going to be our Coordinator of Gifted Education. Ms. Tammy Hanby is currently a counselor at South High School, is going to be our Assistant Principal, one of our Assistant Principals at South. Mr. Will Ragland, currently a Bright fellow intern at South High School, is going to be our, one of our Assistant Principals at North High School. And Dr. Paul Hopkins, currently with Patel for Kids, who will be joining us, you, as our new Executive Director of Human Resources. So I'd like to welcome all of them to the Westerville family.
Thank you. Can you please call the roll on that motion?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay. And can I have a motion in a second for Items 8.02 and 8.10?
So moved.
Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Abstain.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
I would just like to thank you, Ms. Lofton. I know this is your last meeting with us, right?
It is.
Congratulations. We wish you well on your new opportunity. It's glad that we were able to find someone to take on your role, but we really appreciate all you've done for our district and wish you well.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my time so much at Westerville, and really will miss everyone here a great deal. So, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we're on 9.01. I see that there is no old business. And then we have new business, Item 10.01, Policy 7542. Is there anyone we're going to talk about? Mr. Lewis, would you like to address the board? Can I have a, no, I don't need a motion now. Go ahead.
Madam President, members of the board, I have before you two new policies for your consideration. The first one is 7542, which is access to technology resources, and 7530.O2, which is staff use of personal communication. The first one, 7542, is a policy addressing individuals using personal communication devices. This would be phones, tablets, laptops, anything that they would bring in of their own. It creates a new policy that governs the use of personal communication devices to access the district's wireless, both the business and the guest. It also, anyone trying to connect a network device to our infrastructure with a network cable is now required to go through the IT Department to verify that it meets criterias, viruses, malwares, or anything that tracks in. It also specifies that any violation of standards may result in the loss of access to the network and involving vendor and potential loss of business and cancellation if we find anybody violating those. The second policy, 7530.O2, three, sorry, is a policy that addresses WCS staff members using personal communication devices while working. The first one addresses safety concerns. The policy addresses the safety concerns that prohibits employees from using personal communication devices while driving board-owned devices. It also reinforces the need to maintain confidentiality of student personal identification information and urges discretion if using such devices. It also reinforces that the communication occurring on personal communication devices is subject to public record request. It also requires employees at the conclusion of their employee to verify that any work-related information is actually transferred back to the district. It does require any employees, if disposing of or no longer using a personal communication device, is to transfer any records also to us. It requires employees to notify the district immediately if their personal communication device is lost or stolen, hacked, or anything like that, so that we can actually take a look at it and make sure that none of our information has been compromised. It does prohibit storage of certain information. We want to make sure that social security numbers, personal information, financial information, health records are not stored on personal communication devices. This also notes the excessive use of personal devices in the workplace is also identified in here, so that we may do results in disciplinary actions on those. Questions?
Greg, you may want to check the policy numbers. In one, it is 7530.O2, and the other one, it's 7530.O3.
Looks like it's O2. You're correct.
Just, yeah, just correct.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Nancy, do you have something?
You could tell, since I had my mouth hanging open, right?
Because you know I'm going to jump on it, and that is...
You go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, it's just an observation. I'm looking forward to the day when Neola understands the difference between a policy and an operating procedure.
Yes, yes.
And I have to admit, I mean, again, you know, this is, these two policies are areas of my work expertise. What I get concerned about when a policy by Neola is written in such a prescriptive manner is that if any of the components within this overly-written policy is ever found to be defective, the entire policy will be ruled defective. And that's extremely problematic, especially when we're talking about personal use and business use relative to what the expectations and the demands are on the user. So I get concerned, as I scroll through this, I see, I see the potential for smart people with bad intentions to navigate the loopholes in these prescriptive policies, because they're truly procedure documents. And I don't see definitive statements relative to the policies themselves in terms of what is and is not acceptable. I see lots and lots and lots of instructions. So we've said this for a number of years. I don't expect it to change. I just feel like we need to exhibit a bit of caution on how much of Neola's guidance we consume for these policies.
Richard and I take turns on which one of us is going to say something like that. But as I was looking at this one, I was wondering what everybody else thought about maybe this policy, because it is so highly prescriptive, because it is so much administrative guideline-oriented. I'm wondering if this might be a good opportunity for us to take the intent of what's brought forward now and rework it into a policy statement and administrative guideline statement, so that we have more of what makes better sense for policy and procedure, instead of trying to create a highly-prescriptive, instruction-laden document that isn't really policy and isn't quite the procedures we specifically want to say, but is some sort of mishmash of the two. So bringing it forward is a good idea, as it lets us know, you know, what are the parameters? What are we looking at? What are the issues that we're facing? But this may be an opportunity for us to step out and say, okay, fine, we know that we have problems with this. This one is one that readily lends itself to our taking it apart and making it both policy and guideline statements. I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but we could work on that.
I like that idea as a test, because we continually get frustrated with Neola's wording sometime, and so maybe this be the test case, where we split the two.
I'd be okay with that.
And I think that's something we can do. I think both Greg Lewis and the Gregs, and Greg V. Brants, both, if they can take a look at that, and maybe Richard, obviously because of your background with technology, and Nancy with the policy, we can send something out to you guys before we bring it back for a second reading.
I'm game.
Yeah. And I'll just give a quick highlight on the very last line related to potential disciplinary action. A violation of this policy may constitute just cause for disciplinary action up to and including termination. Use of a PCD in any manner contrary to local, state, or federal laws may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. That's great from a general statements standpoint, but if we take into account just the federal laws component of that, exactly which federal laws are we, you know, suggesting, you know, qualify for disciplinary action and termination? Are we talking about, you know, participating in either knowingly or unknowingly, you know, actions by nation-state actors, or by terrorist organizations, or being duped by, you know, there's just, there's just a lot of air gap in the way that this is written, that, like I said, creates opportunities either for people to get caught up in situations that they're completely unaware of and can't necessarily manage, or folks that are technologically savvy can navigate through these loopholes. So I think we need to do some work on this.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Moving on to Agenda Item 11.01, Standing Business, Approval of the Class of 2018 Graduates from Central, North, and South High Schools. Just a little information. Well, first, can I have a motion in a second? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I do have some details here. We have, for Westville-South High School, we have 426 graduates this year. Central High School has 466, and North has 427. Any other comments?
I just think it would be an awesome prank. Am I actually allowed to exclude one student?
Let's do three.
Two, three? Yeah. I mean, just like one last shot?
Four.
No, okay, there we go.
So moved.
I think that was just a joke. Any other comments?
Not that I should make.
Okay. Can you please call the roll?
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.02. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve donations?
So moved.
I would just like to say thank you. We always appreciate donations. We have a lot of very generous entities that support the district on a regular basis. So can you please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11.03, Our Overnight Field Trips. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Comments or questions?
I just want to say one thing, and I wish I didn't have to say this, but those that have observed the news in the last few weeks have seen school trips and accidents and sadness. And so at this point in the agenda, we always make a joke about, oh, take us, take us. I mean, we laugh about it, and we send the kids with our blessing and all of that. And I, I think I just want to say to folks that we, as a board, are thrilled that they do this kind of thing. But there's a part of us that is quite well aware that these are kids, they're students, and we're placing them in the hands of responsible adults. And we have complete confidence, but just in watching the news the last couple of weeks... And we have complete confidence, but just in watching the news the last couple of weeks, I thought we need to say that we do recognize this, parents and teachers, that this is, these are precious lives. That's, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Can you please call the roll?
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 11.04. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve the resolution to employ the treasurer? So moved.
Second.
Okay, I would like to introduce our treasurer candidate and her family, if you wouldn't mind staying up, Nicole Marshall. She's here with her family, her daughter Alyssa, and her husband Jason. She comes to us with a variety of experience. She's a treasurer in Fairborn City Schools. She's also been the assistant treasurer in Kettering City Schools, and then she's also been an auditor for the State Auditor's Office. So I think she's going to do a fabulous job here in Westerville. We're really excited to have her. She's planning on moving here, too, so definitely going to be an important part of the community. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Cotter.
Yes, thank you. Congratulations. Welcome. Moving on the agenda is Item 12.01. We do have some speakers. Just a reminder that you'll each have five minutes to address the board, and our first speaker, if you come up to the podium, is Sean Urbanic? Urbanic?
Urbanic.
Urbanic? Okay. The timer will be on the screen. Thank you, Sean.
Give me a poke when we get to about four minutes, if we're still here. So first of all, I want to thank you for your service to the community, board members. As proud parents of a graduating senior who is presumably still on the list of graduates approved this evening, we very much appreciate the quality of the education and the support services that she's received from grades one through 12, and we're very proud of her for her hard work, but very appreciative of everything that went into getting her to where she is today. We do however, think there's, you know, as always, a little bit of room for opportunity, for improvement. You may recall we've been here before to ask for some support with regard to communication around changes to food service menus. Our daughter, Lila, as well as our graduating senior, both have pretty significant food allergies. Lila's are fairly lengthy and really considerably restrict the diet and the days that she can eat at school. So, you know, we're very actively seeking information about the menus, but menus change, and we understand there are circumstances where that's a necessity, but we asked for support with a method by which parents could be notified of menu changes. And we appreciate the direction you gave us. We were able to make contact with food services. Ms., was it, yeah, Ms. Carissa Dennis, who is currently out on leave, was very responsive ultimately in helping us develop an exception process by which we would get communications, and that was initially very effective. Unfortunately, it was an exception process, limited in scope and subject to the kind of deterioration you would expect of an exception process. People change positions, exception processes that aren't exercised are forgotten. And unfortunately, we had a couple of instances that, of that coming up here at the end of the year. One instance where there was a communication that was made inside the school of an upcoming menu change for the next day, but unfortunately, our daughter didn't let us know about it until the day of on the way to school, which is exactly the challenge that we saw in that method of communication. Relying on an underage student to convey important information can be hit or miss despite how good she is and how smart she can be sometimes, amazingly so. More recently, just last Friday, there was a menu change after we sought an understanding of what the menu was going to be for these last couple of days of the year, recognizing that things get a little bit ad hoc. We very proactively sought information about the menu for the last couple of days. We received it. We received information. We actually were present during a confirmation that the contents of the meeting for, of the menu on Friday would be all safe ingredients, at least one item. But when Lila got to school, she got to the lunch line, that one safe item wasn't available. So if I may, I'd like to let you, I'd like my daughter to tell you what she had for lunch that day, if that's permissible. Lila, would you mind telling them what you had for lunch on Friday?
Here.
Just speak up.
Can you do it? Tell them what you had. Two milks, one cranberry packet, some goldfish, and applesauce.
So, you know, we appreciate the responsiveness of food services. When Lila pointed out that there wasn't a safe menu item there for her, they didn't push back, they didn't argue with her, they didn't try to force an item on her, and they did provide her something, which we appreciate. We think there's probably a lot of opportunity there, though, in that they could have contacted us, and they probably could have found a little bit more for choices. So with that as an example, we would like you to consider, and the reason that we're here tonight, is we'd like you to consider a broader, more comprehensive approach to communication of menu changes, something that I don't think, and, you know, Mr. Byrd, you probably know the cost of these kinds of communications much better than I do, but, you know, we think that there, given the infrastructure that exists for communication to parents, there's got to be a more effective way, more reliable way, where menu changes can be communicated, and we recognize that this opportunity is far, far broader than a single family at a single school, and I'm sure you're aware as well. So, you know, if we can contribute to that conversation at all, we would be more than glad to, but please consider something more durable than what was put in place for us when we were here last. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have one other speaker, Jen Hubbell. Would you like to come up to the podium?
Hello, all of you. I would like to be much less formal than this, but this is my opportunity, so, and excuse me, it was field day today, and I haven't been home yet, so. I'm here just because usually when I come to speak at a board meeting, I'm here not only as a, I'm here tonight not only as a parent, but also as a staff member, and I'm a teacher at Walnut Springs Middle School, seventh and eighth grade math. But I'm usually come here not only to represent or talk to you about my own children, but as a representative for those children who don't necessarily have parents who have the time or energy, or, you know, just to realize that their child may be impacted by something. And so this year, I have a, my daughter's a seventh grader at Genoa, and as I said, I teach at Walnut Springs. And my seventh grader is experiencing a much different middle school experience than my son, who will be a senior next year, in that there are a lot of courses offered at the middle school level now that are high school credit classes, and that's wonderful. No complaints. My worry is for these students, we're talking about two sets of students, and I sent an email out to all of you, and Dr. Kellogg was great, and he responded, and it was great, but I just feel like email doesn't always communicate really what my goal is. And I know that he said you will look at that policy, and I was surprised to find that other districts treat these courses and the way it impacts a child's high school GPA very differently than ours does, and that surprised me. My main concern is that these are kids who are not as mature and aren't, and even though they'll say, you know, I'm going to do this, and they don't necessarily always know how that can impact them in their future. And they also, they want to challenge themselves, and I don't want to see these students have a negative impact from wanting to have that academic challenge. So we have students who now can take Algebra I, they can take Spanish, and now they can take, in all the middle schools, now they can take the honors history. It's a lot. And then many of these students are then taking advanced classes in other subject areas. And so, yes, as a parent, we can say, no, we don't, we don't want them to do that, but why are we telling them no for something they're trying to do to challenge themselves? And my worry is that there, it's very hard, as you all know, that it's very hard to bring a GPA up. It's very easy to make your GPA go down. And so I would hate to have these students who are trying to challenge themselves start off high school with the challenge of having to climb that mountain. And so I think we have to be careful, just because we're giving them all these wonderful opportunities, but are they really mature enough yet to understand the impact that that can have on them in high school? And the thing that really, it came to me last week after I got Dr. Kellogg's response, and it was great, and he said, and he copied Mr. Reeves, and he said, we're going to address the policy moving forward, but he can't really see a change. These students have 10 days to decide if they want to continue with these courses. 10 days, you're asking me as a parent to decide if my daughter can handle that course load? I think that we probably can find a way to make a change, at least in that, in that timeframe. Give us an opportunity to let them really try. 10 days doesn't let them try. And so I'm here tonight just to say, I'm not asking you to revamp this whole policy or say that it doesn't have to impact their GPA like other school districts, but maybe you can give us a little more time to say, hey, look, this is, we're glad you tried this. We're proud of you for trying this, but maybe you need to, maybe we need to take a step back from all this, without just right away saying, don't try. And then the thing that really came to mind was for my students. So I teach seventh and eighth grade math, Common Core, and this year, the district is offering for the first time a course that we're calling Bridge, that allows these students who haven't been in the accelerated math courses to now take a bridge course for the first half of the semester of school, along simultaneously with Algebra I, high school credit class affecting their GPA. As I recommended, or I talked to parents on the phone for the students that we want to offer this to, I tried to express to them how this can impact them, but I'm not sure they all get it, especially if they haven't had a high school student. And so I'm really concerned for those students who are taking, they want to, they're all excited about this opportunity to do this, but I have, I'm just worried that I'm setting them up for an opportunity at failure instead of success, instead of rewarding them for their hard work. So I just hope that you can think about that timeframe and give them a chance to be successful and not be punished right, right, just because they didn't, you know, didn't, they took on something that they wanted to challenge themselves, and then they maybe didn't.
Five minutes.
It was too much. Okay, so just the timeframe. Thanks so much for your time.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 13.01. Are there any board comments?
Just a couple things. I do think that we can look at a more comprehensive approach to letting parents know about menu changes. I think that we do have the technology and platforms that are available to make that work. Probably, it's exactly as Mr. Urbanic was talking about, people who were engaged in doing that may have moved on or on leave or whatever, but I think that we can find a way to implement that, not only implement, but embed it, so that it does, does happen well. You know, whether we're using Power School or whatever else we can use to get word out about that, the function is more in embedding the process so that it does happen, because you're right, there are a number of children that this does apply to, and those children will continue to enter our doors and need our help with that. So hopefully, we can take a look at that, Mark. If you pass that along, work on that, I would very much appreciate that. The second thing, Jen, your email was very clear. I understood the problem immediately when you laid it out. I was also pleased with Dr. Kellogg's response. He's very much interested in looking at that, and Mr. Reeves is taking that on. I am very much interested in a rapid return on the information, on finding out what solutions we may need to implement, because you're right, we've made a number of changes, we've opened up a whole lot of doors, and you have to be careful when you open those doors as regards the ramifications of stepping through them. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, and I understand the timeline need. So hopefully, we will be able to look at that sooner rather than later.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I, first of all, Nicole and your family, so glad to have you here, very excited to have you stepping into this new role with us. Unfortunately, you have to put up with this school board, so just fair warning. I do want to kind of come back to the five-year forecast. I kind of hesitated to open up comments during the presentation, but one of the things that I see when we look at our five-year forecasts, and we have used this as our measuring stick with a lot of discipline over the last several years, the things that concern me within the five-year forecast are those things that we have the least control over. Most, obviously, within the revenues, pardon me, the expenditure spaces, is insurance When we see insurance costs that we're having to forecast a 10% and 12% growth year-on-year, that is tracking at multiple times the rates of inflation, which tends to be our guidepost relative to the growth of expenditures. And when you look at that seven- or eight-year pathway of 10% and 12% growth per year, we start to see substantial changes in the amount of money required to support those benefits for our staff, our teachers, and our, and their families. This isn't our problem, this is everybody's problem, obviously, but it does concern me. And I think probably even more importantly, what does concern me is, and I've been very, very blunt about this in the past, and I felt it was necessary to kind of be blunt about it again, there is the tremendous amount of uncertainty relative to our four-time-found unconstitutional school funding model in the state of Ohio, a state school funding model that has been refused to be touched by multiple legislatures. Nobody from the governor's office to the House Representative, the State House and the State Senate has had the ability to exhibit any courage in actually taking on this problem, and it results in a substantial cap of funds that our citizens pay in taxes that are not returned to this district. And on top of that, this district is recognized as a district where the community gives more than its fair share relative to the revenues that we generate locally. So the state takes away, and our community steps up, and we continue to see this over and over and over again with no resolution, because we have people at the state level of government that exhibit no courage in fixing a problem that the Supreme Court has told them to fix multiple times. That's what concerns me about our five-year forecast. All the good things that we have been doing continue to have an element of risk relative to the actions of others and the inactions of others. And it's my hope that one day, at least within my lifetime, that we see a state that takes on accountability and responsibility for fixing this mess.
Any other comments?
I'll be playing the loop.
I was thinking, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. I agree with Dr. Nestor Baker, the comments, really, it's wonderful emails. I love receiving emails that challenge us with some changes that we can try to tackle. And thank you, Jen, for that, and to the Urbanic family, thank you for coming forward again, and let's just keep pursuing this. I think it's important, and surely, we can do a better job in communicating that. So it's important. Retirement recognition, really, the folks, and I know none of them stayed for the board meeting, I don't know why, but none of them stayed, and so they're out that door, but we really do celebrate all they've given. If you want to see some fun graduations, join us this Saturday down at Celest Center. Ten is south, right? Two is north, right? And six, then, central? So really, come on down. It's just really, it's wonderful to see the joy in these kids' faces and in the parents and the teachers, and just, it's just a wonderful celebration that we get to be a part of, but you all accomplished. We just get to be a part of it.
We just get to be a part of it. I too would like to, Nicole, welcome, and Elise, right? Alyssa. Alyssa, Alyssa, I'm excited to have you here, and if you do not get a piece of cake like you were promised, I want you to tell me afterwards, all right? We'll talk about this. Yeah, I'm getting everybody in trouble now, aren't I? Welcome aboard. Excited to have all of you here with us. And I want to say a big thank you to the lady to my left here. Laura has stepped in with unfortunate departure of Bart, who led us extremely well. Some of these numbers and where we are today is due to a lot of work that he had done for a number of years, and Laura stepped right in and kept it going and has done very well. And so, I, really, I think from all of us, we are very grateful for the work that you've done, and you're continuing, and you're going on, but I just.
She's not.
She's not going to stop right now.
She's thinking about it.
I get one of those.
Yeah, okay, all right. And the final thing, I want to give a word from the board administration to Ms. Rhonda Gilpin. Rhonda is the head of the Teachers Union, WEA, and her brother, who has been quite ill, passed away today. And so, we, certainly on your behalf, send Rhonda our thoughts and our prayers, and she is a, she is a good lady with a broken heart right now, and so, we just wanted to share our thoughts and certainly our condolences to Rhonda. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to echo my welcome to Nicole and her family again. Thanks also from Ms. Hendricks for doing a great job as our interim treasurer. And then, I also want to welcome all the other administrators that are starting. I know most of them have left with their families, but I do want to welcome them as well. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 14.01. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, June 11th, and Monday, June 25th at 6:00 PM here at the Early Learning Center. And then, I would like to entertain a motion and a second for adjournment.
Second.
So moved and second.
So moved and second.
Pick who you like.
Yeah, wherever.
Can you please call the roll?
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mr. Byrd.
Yes.
Ms. Davidson. Ms. Cotter.
Yes. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for attending this evening.